Stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We finally moved that flag over so we can see him.
Yeah. Pull it for me.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. And first item on our agenda is public comment. If you have anything you'd like to say to the board, please step up to the microphone and I'll give you three minutes. Open mic. And step right up, anybody? Okay. If not, we'll close public comment and move into item number two, consider consent agenda. And I think if there's anybody who'd like to make any moves on the consent agenda, now is your time.
I would like to ask that items B and C be removed.
Items B and C?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have to do a motion? Okay, so we'll move them to, after item six, we'll move them to seven and eight. And then adjournment will be nine. Any other on the consent agenda? If not, we move to approve the one item left, which is the Board of Minutes from January 27, 2025.
So moved.
Second, support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, passes. Item number three, Maya Smith tribute presented by Donnie Steele. Oh, hi, Donnie. I didn't see you sitting back there. Nice to see you. Welcome. Presented by Donnie Steele, our state representative from the 54th district. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here today. I would just like to present a tribute before the Board of Trustees, for Bloomfield, of course, and the audience, and of course, his mother. And so I met this young man, Maya Smith. He actually, his mother reached out to me because she's a, she is a volunteer for the Bloomfield Cable Television, and she has a program there that she presents every week. And then she did some, a candidate forum, and that's how I met her. And then she, it was only because of her son and his civic activity that encouraged his mom to do the engagement with some of the representatives, the current and some that were running. So that's how I met the family. So it's with his advocacy that I would just like to recognize today. And so if you don't mind if I read a little bit of the tribute, I won't go read the whole thing, but part of it. So the state of Michigan would like to pay special tribute to Maya Smith, the Young Citizens Academy, and let it be known that as with great pleasure, we commend Maya Smith for his phenomenal work in creating the Young Citizens Academy and for the admirable community services it provides. This recognition is well-deserved spotlight for innovation planning and personal commitment. He's shown exceptional initiative by transforming a simple activity by dropping off books in a classroom into a thriving organization dedicated to empowering young students. He's a ninth grade student, and he launched a program designed to teach elementary school children about civics. Through engaging activities like mock elections, Maya has given young learners hands-on experience in understanding the election process and fostering an early appreciation for civic engagement. And then I will just go to paragraph four and five, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And so Maya has devoted countless hours to developing creative lesson plans that make learning both fun and impactful. The fortunate students who are a part of the Young Citizens Academy gain invaluable knowledge and experience that enhance the quality of their education and broaden their horizons. So in special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated honoring Maya Smith and the Young Citizens Academy for their outstanding work. Maya's unwavering passion for civic education serves as an inspiration to us all, and we look forward to seeing the continued growth and the success of the Young Citizens Academy. So sealed by the state of Michigan, and Jeremy Moss, our senator, state senator, also signed it, and for the 103rd legislation in Lansing, February 10th. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't know if you'd like to say anything just to, okay, do you guys mind?
No, please do. Take your time, Ms.
So as Ms. Steele mentioned, I run the Young Citizens Academy. I go to the elementary school in Waterford and teach civics to the elementary school students there. So it's an honor to do that, and I hope to continue it this year and then hopefully next year as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and what you guys do as a board for Bloomfield Township.
Yeah, thank you, Donnie. We feel the same, too, with, and congratulations on your appointment to Appropriations Chair on Transportation, correct? That's great. Wonderful. Yeah, keep up, keep up the good work. Okay, item number four, discuss open finance tool in township finance and accounting reporting presented by Jason Tice, our Finance Director. Welcome.
Thanks. So I wanted to give you a brief introduction and demonstration of a new item available on our growing finance page called Open Finance. It's years in the making. This specific one I found late last summer, and then it's been a process getting that up and running. So it's now live on our webpage, on the finance page. There's a link that updates to our ledger data on a weekly basis. So this is the homepage. When you come out here, you can, you can search finance data if there's something you're looking for specifically, and it'll find all of the information with that term or that amount in it. It's in a couple of, few tiles here. One is revenues that you can explore. And then on this side, expenditures. Below that, you have, if you want to explore, specific details of vendor payments. And then lastly, you can look at total payroll spend on a fund level basis in that category. Below that, you have breakdown pie chart of major revenues, and then a couple links back to our other pages. So just to give you an idea, clicking in the revenue, it's for our current fiscal year. It's by, it defaults by category, so, and it's in order of what was budgeted. So obviously, our taxes are the biggest revenue we have. That's the gray bar, and then the blue bar is where we stand the last time this information was updated, what we've collected so far. If you didn't like it sorted that way, you can come here and go by fund. So similarly, of course, Public Safety is the largest fund, so that one's going to be up at top, and following behind is the General Fund. So if I want to look at property taxes, you can click on here. Also below that, if you don't like the chart, it's all in table format below. And so as you keep drilling in, it creates this tree, so you can go backwards to previous screens that you were at. If we go back to the homepage, it's a similar format, or almost identical format, on the expenditure side, just of course, looking at expenditures instead of revenues. You have the same, same ability to change how it's organized and drill in. General Government, transfers out, obviously, are the biggest piece with, with the General Fund supporting road and Public Safety. Drill into Buildings and Grounds, now you can see within that specific department the categories of those expenses and so forth. And then the last thing I want to show you is in the vendors. So it's going to break it down by fund here. You can change this to vendor, and it'll show you, again, with the highest going down to the lowest, who our biggest vendors are. Oakland County is here because we collect all their taxes and then disperse them to them, so it's, it's not our expense. And I guess I should explain that is, the vendors are just payments out, which is why it has 219 million, which is way above our budget. This is all monies coming out of the township, whether it was our expense or not. So we collect over $130 million a year of other, just school districts, county, state, all of their taxes run through our books and then are dispersed on a bi-weekly basis. So no, no relativity to our budget when you get to this vendor spend area. You can then say, drill into SACWA here, and click on checkbook, and then you've got all of the payments to SACWA. You can come back here and type in. Oops. Hubble, one of our vendors, Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark. Search that way, and then it'll take you right. Instead of drilling in through the other way, you can come right here and look at all of those, those payments. So it's another expansion to what we've done over a number of years, building out this finance page. So just kind of round out, you know, we have all our audits out here, our budgets, the annual advisor reports, our actuarials, evaluations. We now have this open finance, OPEB and DB. We have significant financial policies, our contracts, and so forth. So feel free, at any time in your free time, you want to go out there and explore and shoot me a message, and, or if, or if you find something that you don't think looks right and needs to be fixed, then I can get back to the software developer and get that sorted out.
It looks like a great tool. Gives you a lot more information.
Chris, do you have a question?
Not a question, just a comment. I really appreciate you taking the time to continue to find ways to be as transparent as we can be. This is just adding to our transparency that we already have and provides our residents even more detail of what we're doing here, because there's nothing to hide. So I really appreciate you taking the time to do this and continue to build it out. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, I know we opened up the payroll and vouchers over the past several years to make it more robust, and this takes it another step that I know the previous board had worked hard on advocating for, and you did a great job with it. And thank you, because it's just more information for the residents, so they see how their money's being used.
Can you go back to the vendor page, please? I noticed SACWA, but the, did not list.
That would be Oakland County.
That would be Oakland County.
Cushion on someone's chair.
Your chair's been squeaking, Earl.
I know.
First time I did it, Mark looked at me and I was like.
Need to get some oil on there.
I was eating.
Yeah, I do.
Most of my spades in that chair.
And is there a place we can see, look up fund balances?
Fund balances are updated annually. We don't close our books on a monthly or quarterly basis. So fund balances, you'll find in the annual audit reports as well as the budget report.
So how would trustees go about ensuring there's enough funds available to meet expenditures?
Look at the audit, and then look at the approved budget, and then I'd say follow-up
Any other questions for Jason?
No, thank you for bringing that to us and explaining it.
And Jason, when would you see this be? Do we need to make a motion, or we can just decide to implement this and get it up and running?
It's there, yeah. It was live as of today. Yeah.
No other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Number six, consider approval to hold all Township Board Commission meetings at the keep.
We're still on number four.
The budget.
Pardon me.
Number five.
We can do number five if you want.
Did I skip that on purpose?
That's a small matter.
Mark, we're still on number four.
Sorry.
It's like everybody sitting here is gonna think that they didn't have to be here.
We're still on number four.
Still on number one. We did the.
That was four.
That was four. So number five now, right?
Well, four is also, any questions about the finance and accounting reportings? So there's the open finance tool, and then there's also.
Let's deal with all that under six.
Do it under six? Okay.
So we move to five, and we can talk about the, discuss proposed budget for 2026.
I'm confused. I thought Dirk was prepared to.
I am.
We are. But let's get into the budget, because it'll come up during.
Do it under, okay, under five, then.
Yeah, under five.
Okay.
So we're on five.
We're on five. So Jason, you're still up. So let's, okay, ready? Okay. So we've, we've had a, kind of a conflict in opinion about the Water and Sewer Fund, Mark, that you brought up, that the interest from the Water and Sewer Fund that we put into the General Fund versus put it back into the Water and Sewer Fund. Mark, you've stated your objections and your argument for that, to have it, interest stay in the Water and Sewer Fund versus go to the General Fund. And so when we met, I said, well, we'll get a legal opinion, so we can discuss it. So Dirk has been doing some homework on that. And so I think, are you prepared now to explain your?
Yes, I, yes, I am.
Okay, great.
So more specifically, at the Township Board meeting of January 27th, and the special meeting that was held last week on February 5th, trustee Antakley had raised a couple, a couple of issues pertaining to financial reporting, as well as the budget process itself. Two major issues that were raised were trustee Antakley claimed that the quarterly report was insufficient in missing some things, and that the interest allocated for enterprise funds, like Water and Sewer, for instance, should stay in that fund as opposed to be allocated to the General Fund. Taking the issue of the quarterly report first, the Charter Township Act addresses quarterly reports at MCL 42.29, and specifically provides in pertinent part, at the beginning of each quarterly period during fiscal year, the supervisor shall submit to the Township Board data showing relation between the estimated and actual revenues and expenditures to date. And if income is less than anticipated, the Township Board can reduce appropriations. That's all that's required by the Charter Township Act with respect to the quarterly report. It's my opinion that the quarterly reports prepared, I believe by Jason and Michael together, far exceed what is required by the Charter Township Act. In fact, Bloomfield Township reports, if you look, they show year-to-date actual revenues received by fund, year-to-date actual expenditures by fund, budget to actual comparison of revenues and expenditures, and comparison to previous year, actual year-to-date revenues and expenditures. That is far, far beyond the estimated and actual income and expenses to date requirement that the Charter Township Act provides. So it's my opinion that, that our quarterly reports not only comply with the law, but, but go beyond what is required by the law. With respect to the interest allocation, the interest allocation is addressed primarily in MCL, in the, I'm sorry, in the General Township Act, at MCL 41.77, parents two, and specifically says in pertinent part, "The treasurer shall deposit the money in the financial institution the Township Board may direct. Interest that accrues upon the deposit shall be paid into the general fund of the township." So it's clear that under the General Township Act, which applies when the Charter Township Act is silent, as to this issue, which it is, so you have to go, you have to default to the General Township Act, that the General Township Act is instructing that interest earned on funds goes into the general fund. At the February 5th, 2025 special meeting, trustee Antakley cited the case of Grand Rapids Public Schools versus Grand Rapids, this Michigan Court of Appeals case from 1986, to support his proposition that interest allocated should remain with the enterprise fund. That is, not be put in the general fund, but remain in whatever enterprise fund it is, Water and Sewer, I think is the specific example he was talking about. I read that case, and that case is not on point. That case dealt with the issue of whether the city of Grand Rapids could keep the interest it earned on school taxes that it collected for the district before the city remits the collected taxes to the districts. In that case, basically, the city of Grand Rapids was collecting the taxes for the school district of Grand Rapids. There was a certain period of time, a couple of weeks, or maybe it was three weeks, before the city of Grand Rapids actually remitted those school taxes back to the school district. And during that short period of time, they were collecting, the city was collecting interest on it, and the court said, no, you can't do that. There is language in the dicta of that case, page 656 specifically, that says, "In the absence of a clear statutory provision to the contrary, the general principle is that interest on public funds designated for a specific purpose follows those funds." But in this case, there is not an absence of clear statutory provision, because MCL 41.77, parents two, specifically tells us what to do with that interest. It tells us to allocate it to the general fund. So that case does not stand for the proposition that in our scenario, where you're not dealing with two different municipalities, you're dealing with one municipality and two funds, an enterprise fund, and then other funds within the, the single municipality, that case does not require that the allocation go in, or stay with that enterprise fund, because again, there's not, there's not an absence of clear authority. There is clear statutory authority in MCL 41.77. So it's my opinion that what the township is doing with respect to the interest from these various enterprise funds, including the Water and Sewer Fund, is, is perfectly legal and in fact authorized and instructed by state law, specifically the General Township Act, MCL 41.77, parents two. In some of the various emails that, that trustee Antakley shared with various members of the Township Board, and the members shared them with me, one of the things that trustee Antakley was relying on, both for, I think, the interest allocation, as well as his objection to the quarterly reports, was the 2007 Michigan Department of Treasury Uniform Accounting Procedures for Local Units of Government. And it's interesting to know what that is exactly. If you look at the Michigan Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, at MCL 141.440, small A, parents one, that act specifically says, "The Department of Treasury shall publish suggested manuals, forms, and operating procedures which may be used for local governments complying with this act." So therefore, those, those manuals are intended to be suggested, and they may be followed. Now, if you actually look at, at, at the various documents, and specifically, if you look at the 2007 manual, if you look at the very beginning of the manual, I think it's page one or two, it clearly states that the manual is broken down into three separate sections. General concepts, which are general principles that, that they would like to see, the state would like to see applied to government, required procedures, which come from statutes, and best practices, which in that manual are defined as beneficial procedures that they encourage. So I, I think some of what trustee Antakley has claimed are requirements are in fact actually best practices, which aren't requirements. The requirements are statutory, the manual, the 2007 manual of uniform accounting procedures says that that's where the mandatory requirements come from. And so I, I think that, again, I think, I think trustee Antakley was relying on that manual, and relying on some best practices, not actually, not actual requirements. What the, what the township does have to do, and I know that it does, is you've got to, you've got to comply with not only the statutes, but you've got to comply with the uniform charts of accounts. And I think we've discussed that before, that the township does in fact comply with the uniform chart of accounts. So I appreciate the questions that were raised by trustee Antakley. They're good questions, but I respectfully would say that what the township is doing with respect to the quarterly reports, as well as the income from their enterprise funds, is perfectly legal and appropriate.
All right, Dirk, so let me ask, just a second, Mark, I want to ask him a couple of questions. So the way you're, you're reading it, and my, what I'm hearing is that we're getting interest from the Water and Sewer Fund, and we're depositing in the general fund where we deposit all our money, basically, right?
Right.
And it's our choice to decide if we want to use it for general fund purposes, or if we want to count and put it back into the Water and Sewer.
I think initially, the, without, without Township Board action, the treasurer's got to put it in the, in the general fund. I think if the Township Board wants it to go somewhere else, I think it can make, you know, pass a motion to that effect.
Right. So, so it's a practice, but either way, it's, we're following guidelines, but there's such a thing as best practices?
Yes, there is.
And so you're referring to if we decided to change our practice and put it back into Water and Sewer, is that considered best practice?
It doesn't say that, no.
No. It's just whatever your best practice is.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I clarify something, though, as we're talking about best practices? So no money is being taken out of the Water and Sewer Fund. Okay? Let me be clear. There is no transfer of money out of the Water and Sewer Fund. Okay? For the sake of best practice, we invest, or I invest, the funds in aggregate across all the funds, because that way we don't have 10 different investment accounts and everything like that. So for the sake of, of reducing complexity and getting the best possible investment options, everything is consolidated. So the interest is earned in one account, and it is kept and allocated on the books into the general fund. So there is no money that's coming out of the Water and Sewer Fund. So I don't want to say put back into the Water and Sewer Fund, because it was never there.
Right, but we keep one account, and, and I read the MTA manual, and it talks about how you can keep one account, but account for it on your books separately. So like when we went, Jason, you prepared our budget, you show each department, you show their fund balance of what is in the general fund, but related to whatever department we're talking about, correct?
Well, they, yeah, they each have their own separate fund balance. Those are, those are never combined together, but.
Right.
Yeah, what treasurer Shostak said is accurate. It's, it, the investments are pooled for economies of scale and many other reasons.
Right.
So an option you have is if you wanted to address the enterprise fund, just, just create a new investment, and, and you run it just out of that fund, and, and put like $5 million away, and, and that would be, that, that then would make sense of whatever's earned on it goes right into where that investment came from. But from a pooled standpoint, it's a different.
And then the MTA book I was reading, and I don't have the page, but it did say we can just keep one common account to put our mon, money in, and then we allocate it by, by bookkeeping or to, to that, that account?
It, it does.
Versus keeping separate bank accounts?
It does say that pool, in fact, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the, the manual, the Michigan Department, 2007 Michigan Department of Treasury Uniform Accounting Procedures for Local Units of Government manual, does specifically provide that pooling of accounts is allowed. There are a couple of minor exceptions that, that are not really applicable here, but.
And so if we took the money from the Water and Sewer Fund, and I believe, Jason, is the amount of interest every year about $800,000?
Of all of our?
No, just Water and Sewer.
Oh, I don't have a number, because we, we don't allocate it out.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to basically calculate cash balances every month, or something like that. You'd have to look at the total returns generated for that month and allocate it out over the course of the year. So it would be impossible, sitting here today, to say that X amount of dollars belongs to which fund, because again, it's a pooled investment. The investment returns change over time, interest rates fluctuate, and the cash balances fluctuate. Water and Sewer is heavy at some point, and it's light at other points.
So could we take, and, and, and take the next ever, whatever it takes, week or month, week or couple of weeks, and figure out how much that is? And if we were to put it back into Water and Sewer, what would be the results of Water and Sewer? Would it lower the rates? Would, what kind of impact would it have on the rates? And then if we're using the general fund money as we're collecting interest, what are we using that money for? Because I'm looking at it as, okay, I'd like, we want to lower our Water and Sewer rates somehow, and maybe if we put the interest, does that help us? Or is it negligible, because it's such a big number? I got to think it'd help a little bit somewhere. But if we're using it in the general fund, we're using it for other services that we're providing to the community, right, Jason?
Right. The, the investment earnings we've seen since 21-ish have been extraordinary, not normal, and we're, we're heading back down to.
Right.
Normal, so.
Which is helping us offset our other budget costs, because we're seeing such a large growth in, in interest in our investments, right?
Right. There were years where our investment income pooled was $300,000, $400,000 for the entire budget year, and, and we've been, we've been seeing four million. the entire budget year. And we've been, we've been seeing $4 million, so.
Okay. Okay. I think we need to look into this and dig deeper into the numbers and so we can see what the payback would be for water and sewer by keeping the interest back into the water and sewer fund. And then can you, Dirk, cover again the quarterly reports that you had mentioned in the question Mark had on the quarterly reports?
I think he was requesting that more detail be provided or that perhaps even monthly reports be done. But again, that's not necessary. The quarterly reports and what is required by statute is very simple. It's just estimated and actual income and expenses to date. That's what, that's what the Charter Township Act specifically requires for quarterly reports. And our quarterly reports go far beyond that.
Okay. Mark, go ahead. It's, I know you wanted to ask a question.
Yes. Are interfund transfers considered revenue and expenditures?
That's not a legal question, so.
So, because they are not included in the quarterly reports.
Again, that, if you're looking for a breakdown of that, then it doesn't, it doesn't need to be in the quarterly report. All the quarterly report has to show is estimated and actual income and expenses to date of the township. That's what it has to show.
In aggregate.
Right.
So are the interfund transfers in the quarterly reports in aggregate?
No.
Because we're paying central services fees. I'm sure that those have to be transferred. We're paying pension bond debts.
Jason, can you help me answer that question?
Yeah, I was writing a note. Can you?
The interfund transfers, so we have the central services fees. I'm sure those happen on a, at least a monthly or a quarterly basis. So, and those are typically picked up in the interfund transfers at the bottom of the reports, at least on the, during the budget sessions and in the audits. But they don't show up in the quarterly reports that are provided. So those are revenue streams paying off expenses. And there are also expenditures for the different accounts. So, for example, in the December 31 quarterly report, I've got a copy of it here. Public Safety has $26 million net revenue, net expenditures, but there are no funds being transferred in and out. They started with about $14 million in fund reserves, according to the audit. That means there's $12 million deficit between the two. So where's the money coming from to pay for that? The budget allocated about $7 million in support from the general fund, but not $12 million. So as we go through the year, I think it's important to make sure our fund balances in the general fund, Public Safety and the Road Fund can meet the lowest point of the financial year. And it doesn't appear to be doing so as far as those December statements are concerned.
You know, I'm looking at the quarterly report from through 123124, and there appear to be a number of interfund transfers referred to. General transfers out.
Which?
I don't, I don't know that, frankly, based on the statute, I don't think that's even necessarily required to be in the quarterly report. But it appears that there are some in the quarterly report.
But they are revenues and they are expenses for the various funds. So.
Maybe that's a legitimate question to ask for an understanding purpose if you're looking at budgets or on a quarterly basis to see if you've got the money to pay for it. But if you read 42.29 literally, estimated and actual income and expenses to date. Doesn't say by funds. It just, it just says, theoretically, I suppose you could just put an aggregate number down and see whether you met the, you know, whether you were tracking with the budget.
Does it say estimated?
And I think, I think if I understand this correctly, Mark, is, you know, we collect property taxes twice a year, but yet we have constant expenses, right?
Correct.
So how would you like to see this set up to account for the way we collect our taxes and then have to pay, because we've already, we're budgeting for the year for each department. And then if there's changes, we go back and do budget amendments. But we know what we budgeted. So does it, is it, is it the consistency of seeing quarterly reports of how that money's being distributed? Because we know our revenue's coming in in September and February.
So here's the section on public safety. Right here is the $26 million expenditure I have for public safety. And they started with $14 million. There's a $12 million deficit through December. The budget should, so how are those funds being covered if the general fund is only out, has only allocated $7 million? We increased it by $2 million coming out from the general fund, but that's still a shortfall. And I think the budget should at least cover the lowest point of the financial year, and it's clear that it's not. And the interfund transfers are used to pay for the central services fees, which is, which are acceptable. However, they're not being recorded as we would see on a monthly, in the financials at the end of the year or in the budget. So if the money is being transferred out, that's fine. It's still an expense for the public safety.
Right. But if we show it at the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year, and it all balances out at the end of the fiscal year, doesn't that, it makes us whole?
It's not about being whole. It's being, making sure we have enough fund balances to meet the requirements on a monthly basis. And I think it's important.
Are you confusing cash with fund balance? Do you understand the distinction? Because we have more than enough cash and more than enough fund balance, but they're two different things.
Well, the distinction is that, I'm not talking about cash. I'm talking about, is there enough, was enough allocated in the budget to meet the requirements during the course of the year? And during the course of the year, in December, it's clear that public safety needed $12 million.
But see, that's a different, that's a different point than whether what's being done is legal and complies with law. So the quarterly report that's being provided to, if I'm looking at the right page, which I think I am, where it shows, you're raising the issue about public safety, showing the, in parentheses, 26 million, 475, 1179, right?
Yes.
So that's given you enough information to ask the question that you want an answer to. How do you cover that? And, you know, that can be answered by Jason or Michael or whoever. But that's, it's different, that's different than saying that the way the quarterly report is done is not in compliance with state law. It is in compliance with state law. And in fact, it's provided you with the information necessary to ask a question, legitimate question, but to ask the questions. So I guess I'm not really seeing what the problem is.
Well, again, you also stated that the revenues and expenditures have to be listed. The interfund transfers are revenue streams for the different funds and expenditures for the different funds. And they are not in the quarterly report.
But you're using the word funds. And again, the statute doesn't say that.
Right.
Well, I don't, I'm sorry.
I think Jason, by the way, has something.
Go ahead.
So the quarterly report includes all transactions for those reported funds as of that day. So any interfund transfers that occurred are included. They are not excluded from that report.
So they, so they aren't broken out as interfund transfers?
Well, in fund accounting and modified accrual, which is what we're required to do, is a, they don't get combined until you get to a full accrual basis at the government-wide audited financial statement level. At fund level, it's going to be an expense out of one for a time being and a revenue into another, and then they'll later be eliminated through entries. So
Also.
In short, yes. If any of those interfund transfers have occurred, it'll be a revenue on one side and expenditure on the other.
But also, Jason, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but this report is at the activity level, which is how we budget. We budget at the activity level. We're not showing the underlying accounts beneath each of these activities. And the transfers would be one of those accounts. So we're not showing, you know, salary wages. We're not showing FICO. We're not showing consulting expense. We're not showing postage. That's all contained within these activities, which is more than we need to do to comply with the statute. So we're already showing it by activity level since that's how we budget, okay? So to echo what you said, those transfers are included. They're included as accounts beneath these activities.
As long as they've occurred at the stated date.
Yeah, if they've occurred as of the date of the report.
And not all of them have occurred yet.
And Jason, let me ask you a question, and we'll use PD as an example. Let's say, let's say PD's short, you know, half a dozen officers. So they'll have to fill the patrols with overtime. How do you report the overtime so it shows up? That, because that would increase our budget or, may not, because we haven't, we haven't filled the roles that we budgeted for, right?
Yeah. So to that specific question, salaries and wages is all forms of pay. So you're just trading a normal base wage for overtime pay.
And we probably, and it's not, you want to be in that position, but we probably end up physically ahead if we're paying overtime versus hiring an officer.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. And I think what Mark's referring to is just a different accrual method than what we're practicing today, right, Mark?
I, that I'm not sure of because it really hasn't been answered. So, for example, under public safety on the expense side, has there been an accrual for the central services fees?
Central service fees, I believe, were recorded either at, I think I record those at 9:30. So those would have been in the previous report, which still would show up there because that's a year-to-date report, not just for that specific quarter.
So they're excluded from the quarterly reports? Is that what you're saying?
No, no.
They're always in it, but they're not highlighted?
As of now, that's, that's an entry, a transfer that I believe I make every September 30th. So that, that would be in there.
So then it's, it would be included in the December 31?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And then that shows up as a cash revenue stream coming into the general fund and that was also done in September?
Revenue to general fund and expenditure to many other funds.
Okay. Any other questions, Mark? Be good. Okay, let's go back to water and sewer, okay, for a minute?
Okay.
So what, we're going to study the water and sewer and find out if, what the difference would be if we credit it back. It would lower rates because that's probably where you want to go with it, isn't it?
Correct.
I'm assuming, right?
Correct.
All right. So we can study that over the next month and see what it looks like. It's a little more complicated, I think, right, Michael, than what we're talking about? I mean, there's some steps that need to occur here, correct?
Yeah. I mean, it's, I mean, there's some assumptions that need to be made. You've got to, you've got to look at the cash balance of each fund every month, look at the collected, earned rate of return on the investments for that month, and then allocate it out. And, you know, we have multiple, as we all saw on the fifth, we have multiple types of investments, from bonds to local government investment pools to money markets. I mean, there's different vehicles that were earning income. So we'd have to look at that, get a, you know, call it a weighted average rate of return. And then you'd have to look at the cash balances by fund for each month and then ultimately come up with a number. And I think you're going to find, again, I think the number's going to be immaterial, but we can certainly do the math.
One other point, too, which Jason made earlier, which is that'll just be the returns for the most recent year, which were extraordinary. Many other years, they're really low. It's hard, you know, take, can't really take that snapshot and say that
Right. I mean,
all over all those years.
Martin, I think, I think that's an excellent point because, as Jason mentioned, up until a couple of years ago, we were earning just a few hundred thousand dollars a year for the entire year.
Right.
So to go through this exercise of allocating out was pennies, you know? Last year or this, this fiscal year that's going to be ending in March, we're probably going to hit, you know, $2 million, right, in income? And so, okay, so that may present a little bit more money. But I think, you know, when you look at a budget, like in water and sewer, that's $35 million, again, how much materiality are you getting for the, for the effort? But I'm happy to do the work and we, I can present back.
Because year after year, we could see some real fluctuations of what you're getting.
Yeah, month to month. I mean, rates change every, you know.
There's tremendous fluctuation every year and every, every quarter. And depending on, when we get to the water and sewer rates and the calculations and how it's determined, you'll see that there's so many variables involved. So, I mean, I think it's kind of an exercise in futility. It's not going to make any difference. It really isn't. And I'm very comfortable with the way it is right now. And on top of it, thank you, Dirk, for answering the questions. You know, any question's a valid question. However, I think the questions have been answered and we're getting way off into different lanes and avenues. And I think we need to stay on scope and get back to the budget if we, if everybody's in agreement. Otherwise, we're going to be answering questions and going all over the place the entire night without any focus. And I think we really need to stay focused on the budget tonight.
Okay. If there's nothing more, we'll move forward. And we have some homework to do and we'll work on it. And Jason, do you want to now go through the budget?
Sure. Quick outline. We'll first give you an update on where the current fiscal year, 33125, is how that's looking. And then we'll look at different categories and funds for next year's budget. This is meant to be a high-level, 30,000-foot view. The line item budget was in the packet. I received some questions ahead of time and addressed those. But, so here we go. So 33125, three main operating funds. So as a reminder, that is our three largest funds, not only in size of operation, but where most of our workforce is. They are also heavily intertwined as far as funding level with the general fund supporting Road Fund and Public Safety Fund. So net of their interfund transfers, when those get made at the end of this fiscal year, we're looking at possibly revenues exceeding expenditures by a total of about $3.2 million. With the caveat, I say it every year, you never know the last couple of months what that holds as far as healthcare. Since we went to self-funded, that kind of throws that into an area where it can fluctuate pretty heavily. The, it's being driven more by reduction in expenditures rather than an increase in revenue. A little different from the last couple of years. And that's, that's mainly vacancies in positions. So we've, we've historically budgeted for full position levels and we haven't yet, we haven't been there in a number of years now. There are also a significant amount of grant revenues that we didn't know, or didn't know we were going to get awarded, so we didn't budget for those. And typically, those are either a 100% or, you know, 70 to 90% match. So there's usually at least a portion of that revenue getting offset by the related expenditure. So there are, like I said, vacant positions. Currently, 16 vacant. It seems to change. I think that's changed even since I prepared this last week. I think we, we made a few hires in the last few days. So, but there's also retirements that keep coming. And that's just across those three main funds, not, not the other funds. And then an update on ARPA, estimating we'll have spent about 1.8 of the 4.4 million at the end of this March. So looking at options for the surplus, same, same as last year, you can look at the DB Pension Plan Trust. In the prior year, we knew in the fall that we were going to have a large surplus that early. So it was a lot easier to make that decision of putting more into that DB plan. That also gave us some time to talk to the library because they're part of the DB Pension Plan. We had to get their buy-in so that they'd pay their share. So this year, while I said 3.2, that could decrease, it could increase as well. So I'm not as comfortable. I'm not So I'm not as comfortable, I'm not recommending putting additional money into the DB plan this year. Also, with some of these, these fund budgets, if you did that, you might have to do some more budget amendments to get that amount to, to fit in. So remember, the, the DB plan, if you make a million-dollar contribution, it's got to be spread out prorata across every fund that has people in it and the library. You have the Retiree Healthcare OPEB Trust. We make our annual contribution into that trust every February, so that'll be coming in the next couple of weeks. So that's another option is, is to increase that contribution. Part of it's coming from the general fund, part comes from Public Safety Fund, and then there's a smaller piece that comes from the Water and Sewer Fund. So what I'm talking about here would be either increasing just the public safety piece, being that, that they have the largest population and, and one of the, we've been trying to build their, their funded ratio up, which by doing so, you would then probably have to increase the transfer in from the general fund to allow them the room to be able to make that increased contribution. Not an immediate effect on that one. It's, it's a long, long-term look rather than short-term. We're still trying to get out of the corrective action plan with plans to be there, I think, in 2040, 2042, somewhere around there. If you don't do anything, all that money gets closed out at year-end into the fund balances. Not necessary at this time. We do have a general fund fund balance policy that we make sure we fall within those parameters. The other funds don't have a policy in place. And then the last option is, of course, the Equipment and Replacement Fund. We've been building up for a number of years now. It's most flexible as far as relieving pressure on future years, having that ability to draw down and use that for future capital, which then relieves pressure on other items in the budget, such as a large healthcare year or other items or revenues that, that, you know, investment earnings weren't what you expected them to be. The approved budget did include a $1.35 million transfer. And so that 3.2 I showed you at the beginning, that is after making the budgeted 1.35 million. You could do more. And the budget amendments that were approved at a prior meeting do allow for that flexibility. And then we do have over 14, I think this is actually a little low, it might be more like 16 million of capital purchases projected for the next five years. We'll be updating that. It's always included in the final approved budget that, that is hosted on our website that shows our, our estimated five-year plan, which is always a moving target. So I'm open to discussion, of course, but my recommendation would be to let that 3.2 go to the Equipment and Replacement Fund. There's no action needed at this time. If, if that's what the board wanted to do, I would be back before you in May. It's a typical time once we've kind of let all the funds close out, all the final invoices come in, and I have a more clear picture of, of what the actual surplus is. As long as that amendment gave us enough room, I believe it did, then I'd be coming back for a board resolution to officially get approval for making the transfer and committing the funds to the Equipment and Replacement Fund. And of course, any minor amounts, because I don't, I never like to cut things too close with the audit. So anything left over would end up closing to fund balances. Any, before I move on to 2026, is there any discussion on, on that or thoughts you want to share?
Chris?
Yeah, so in previous years, if we add more to the defined pension, that will reduce our ADC going forward, right? Because we haven't hit our peak yet. Is that correct?
We are, we are, actually, that's, we're getting close. I, I think we'll hit the peak in the next year or two. The 1125 actuarial is being worked on. We won't have that till May, April, May. That'll tell us, that'll, that'll give a better picture of what those extra contributions did that we made. We made two last year. But yes, it, it, it all helps going forward and helps offset market downturns and.
Just because we've had great returns over the last couple of years, so if I'm thinking about maximizing that dollar, I do like to see an extra pension payment as well as splitting it between the capital improvements fund. But I know previous boards have not always wanted to do that, so that's where I'd like to see some of that money.
We usually have talked about, do we want to, because of the OPEB clock that we're on, that sometimes when we have significant surplus, that do we want to put some more in OPEB to kind of get ahead on that, too, as opposed to the, I mean, I'm not saying all of it, but I'm saying, do we want a portion, some of it to go to get our percentage up in the OPEB fund?
Yeah. I had talked with, at length at one time with Treasurer Sosek about that. There's no dollar-for-dollar return on that because we're still having to maintain it, and we haven't even built up to that point. We have to put our required amount in. So adding extra doesn't give us a budget reduction in future years because we still have to do that amount. At least by putting into the pension fund, if I'm not mistaken from Jason, that we will see a reduction in our ADC. So there is a, a reduction in future budgets.
More advantage.
There is more advantage. Is that correct, Jason?
Yes. You know, and I know, like we talked about last year, and we went back and forth on this a lot. I mean, we're, we, as you mentioned, Chris, we have to make that required contribution anyway. And certainly, the Equipment and Replacement Fund has been very substantial, and, I mean, it's been very helpful in getting us through some of these capital improvements and purchases. So I would just like to repeat what we did last year because I thought it was, it worked out really well. So I would go with your recommendation.
Hey, so the 1 million to the Equipment and Replacement Fund, if water and sewer generate the, their capital and marketable securities generated $800,000, we could also transfer that back to water and sewer. Not going to happen. I mean, based on what we discussed before, we could do that as well.
But we don't know that number, that, we don't know that number.
Yeah, we don't know the number yet. We have to, I'm estimating, but remember, it could fluctuate on our investments and, and the interest in the market.
That, well, that's, that's fine, but we could put it there. We could also put it back into the Building and Inspection Fund. That's also an enterprise fee fund.
But if, anytime we put money back in the general fund, we're using it for the benefit of the residents and the services we provide to them, right?
Unfortunately, not all residents, our members, are paying to water and sewer, do they?
Not all residents pay into water and sewer. Most, what, like such as, give me an example.
So if someone's on a septic tank, they're paying in less. If they're on well, they're paying in less. And that would be a benefit to the individuals that aren't paying in, and it would be reasonable for the water and sewer customers.
But if a resident doesn't pay taxes because they're a renter, isn't it the same argument? They still get the benefit of the community. The owner of the property is the one who gets the benefit of the appreciation, but the renter doesn't. The renter doesn't pay any taxes to us, yet we still provide services to them.
Well, it's, the rent is indirect from the owner of the property.
Doesn't have, again, but the resident, who is a voting resident, does not pay taxes, yet we still provide them service. So I don't consider that the same argument.
Because it's a transfer fee through the renter.
Doesn't always have to be.
To the property owner.
So my, my, my point is, I mean, can it be, can that interest be transferred to the water and sewer fund? Yes, it can. The board could decide to do so. Someone could make a motion. Whether we will or not, Supervisor McCready has already said, we're going to do a little research to see whether that's going to make any, any difference at all. And then, and then, so I don't want to keep on hashing over this. I think we've covered it pretty good. You know, yes, it could be, but 800 seems a little pie in the sky, and we'll come up with some better numbers, and then we can make an educated decision.
Right, and we're coming off a strong market. But let's go back to the OPEB because I got to commend you for putting money aside like this. And, and, and people already know this, but back in the grand bargain in Detroit is what made our communities, through a vote in the legislature and signed by the governor, to put money aside for reserves to pay for healthcare. Because when the grand bargain happened, the state guaranteed those pensions, and there was a lot of businesses that came to the plate, including the DIA, to donate to help refill that void. But where the pensioners were losing was on the healthcare side. And that's why this law was passed, to have communities carry at least a 40% balance, if I'm not mistaken. I remember casting a vote. I was on the legislative committee for the bankruptcy, and this is what it's all about. And I've heard people misrepresent how this, why this happened, or why, what's going on here. But every community in, in the state of Michigan has to follow these rules. And fortunately, we've been shown great fiscal responsibility by getting this done. So way to go, Jason. These are great recommendations. You're doing a nice job. Thank you.
I do have some questions on OPEB. We have five sub-accounts, correct?
Well, I'm not sure we get, you're talking about the budget?
Yeah, I am.
Well, right now, we're talking about where to put the remaining funds from this year. Is that what the point of the question is?
Yeah, we want to decide where to put these funds the last. Okay.
So on the, I think, and I agree with the recommendation, by the way. I would put it in the equipment fund, just gives the most flexibility. It's dollar-for-dollar.
Yep.
You know, if you put it into the pension, certainly not OPEB, because that's not going to help us anytime short.
And the other one.
But pension, it could reduce the ADC, but not in a one-for-one kind of situation. It's, it's a less, lesser reduction. If we keep it in, in my mind, I 100% agree with your recommendation. We keep, we put it instead into the equipment fund, it's a dollar-for-dollar, provides us the greatest amount of flexibility in the near term and long term to manage the budget and our expenses. Those other plans, I mean, those other obligations have plans, and they're, they're on course. We've given extra already, so I don't think they really need any more extra into those. Certainly OPEB for sure, anyway, because that, we put more money in now, we, we shorten the payoff, the, the 40% goal duration, but we don't see any return anytime in the next couple of decades.
So Martin, I 100% agree with you. And so I, I, I agree with Jason's recommendation. I'll take it a step further, just a couple of things. You know, the 40%, so the 40% is a goal, but it's an interim goal. We have to get to 100%, right? We have to fund these obligations. And right now, we're funding the retiree healthcare out of our operating budget. In fact, in the budget that we're about to review, 25% of every dollar that's spent is spent on either retiree healthcare or pension. And so we're, 25% of our budget is effectively paying for, in large part, people who don't work here anymore. And I think that we need to anticipate what the costs are going to be going forward, and putting, putting this money into the Equipment and Replacement Fund, the capital reserve, gives us the most flexibility in the future. If we want to put money into OPEB, we can take this money and put it into OPEB. If we want to put it into the pension plan, we can put it into the pension plan. But having it here gives us the most flexibility to be able to spend it on if we need to address wages, benefits, all that kind of stuff, you know? That's only going up. And we're, you know, Jason's already starting to forecast property tax revenues starting to plateau, you know? So we're not going to see the 7% increases like we have over the last couple of years. We're going to get back to the 2% increases, you know, probably in the next couple of years. And so, but our costs are going to continue to grow faster than that. So we need to be prepared for that. And I think putting that money into this fund gives us that flexibility to be able to address the rising costs that we're going to be facing over the next several years, and gives us the flexibility, if we need to or want to, to put it into OPEB or pension. So that's my two cents.
I, I do have a question about the Capital Improvement Fund. I thought it was only addressing capital improvements, not addressing payroll, not addressing OPEB. To be sure, we could pay for capital improvements to free up other revenue.
Right.
But that's not.
It's not direct. You're right.
Right, it's not direct. But you answered your own question. You know, we have a $16 million capital plan over the next five years. We can either pay for that out of our operating budget, or we could pay for it out of this fund, the Equipment and Replacement Fund. And if we pay for it out of the Equipment and Replacement Fund, then that frees up $16 million in the, in the general budget, and I don't mean general as the general fund, I mean, the total operating budget that we could spend on other things. So yes, it's not a direct transfer. You're, you're taking my words a little too literally, but that the flexibility that we get by being able to use this reserve to pay for the capital and not have it as part of our operating budget gives us the flexibility to spend it, to spend that money on other things.
Now, by the way, if we could do a fund that was, you know, unrestrained completely, it just isn't one on the chart of accounts. I mean, so this is the fund that's allowed on the chart of accounts. It gives us the best, best option.
I have no problem with the Capital Improvement Fund. But I think it's, we are restricted to only use it on capital improvements. And maybe it's better to have a little bit more in the general fund instead of moving everything. I don't know.
The reason why we don't usually put more in the general fund is because, well, one, we have a fund balance policy that sets how much we should have to make sure we can do the, you know, the floats between collections, the point you made earlier. The other reason is that in order to access the general fund, the money and the fund balance, we have to run an actual deficit. And we've never run a deficit. So we, we couldn't access any of those funds without running an actual budget deficit, which becomes problematic.
Correct.
Raise your hands.
Yeah. So putting in that, that spot doesn't really give us the flexibility, you know, that.
It's truly meant for emergency situations.
It is.
Okay. Thank you. Jason?
Switching gears to 2026. So we have a proposed budget in the packet, balanced individually, and when combining the three main operating funds, general, road, and public safety, does include budgeting a transfer into the Equipment and Replacement Fund of $1 million next year, not, not withdrawing any funds from that during that year. And then, next few slides. So revenues, projected taxable value, working with the assessor's office. When I prepared this, it was 5.37 billion. It's gone up a little bit. They're not quite done entering all the new construction, but hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a more finite number. It might add a little bit of taxable revenue, or tax revenue. Maybe another 100 to $200,000 of additional tax revenue that's not in the budget right now. We just have to remember that's across all the funds. So with about 60% of our millages being public safety, if we got 100,000 more, 60,000 would go to that fund, and then they would start getting pieced out from there. So that equates to about a 3.6% net increase of tax revenue after the headly rollback. State revenue sharing, I have at about $5 million, similar to the current year. Last week before, after I had prepared this PowerPoint, they came out with update that they are going to do a, a small increase to state revenue sharing. I don't know that I'm going to, I don't know that it's enough to increase our revenues because it's still mostly driven by what they actually collect in sales tax. So that, that's the main funding for it. So I think I'm, I'm still going to be comfortable with, with about a $5 million number there. We are budgeting a decrease in investment earnings. We kind of beat that up earlier with the lower interest rates coming through, starting to see the effects of that. We have the $1.8 million ARPA revenue being spent in this coming fiscal year, coming out of our 4.4 million of ARPA funds for the fire tower truck. And this year, we'll be providing 100% of the franchise fees to the cable fund. It's been ramping up year over year as, as they face more declining revenues. In the current year, we had 85% going over there and 15% staying in the general fund. So revenues by type. So revenues by type, I know it's a little small, but the big piece, big blue section here, 72% of our revenues are coming from taxes. Your next largest one here is revenue sharing. And then you get into much minor, more minor pieces. Expenditure side, after the board took action in this past January, there's no contractual wage increases left to implement for this budget year. We had another successful renewal between our HR and benefits administrator and our consultants at Manquand Vance, keeping our illustrative rates low. And one of the things that came out of it was they were able to increase our share of the Cigna RX rebates to 100%. Years ago, I believe they were zero. I think we got them to 70% at one point, and then this current year, they were bumped up to 90, and now we're getting 100% of those. The ADC payments, after you back out what the library pays this coming year, is about $5.2 million. We have our OPEB contribution we've committed to paying of $1.25 million. There's been discussion, it started with the strategic plan level and then working its way into the budget. There's a need to create a formal HR department separate from finance. So it's in the early stages, but we've put room in there for two new employees in that department, along with some standard expenses, office supplies, that type of stuff. And then estimating, once we get to the end of fiscal year '26, we'll be close to spending all of the ARPA funds. I think we'll be around 4.2 million with a couple hundred thousand left. And remember, that's ending March. We have until December of 2026, so our fiscal year '27. So it shouldn't be an issue making sure we comply with that deadline. Expenditures, kind of relating to what Treasurer Schostek said earlier. So labor is a huge piece, and then you start getting into pension and OPEB being large pieces as well. So five new positions are being budgeted in this proposed budget for fiscal year '26 in the HR department, a director and a generalist, associate planner in the planning department and the general fund. And then there's been a need for two additional dispatchers in the police and dispatch budget. Right now, we have 16 vacant positions, not including adding those new ones. Again, these may have changed by a couple in the last few days, but planning, one, road, two road, nine in police, fire, three, and ESD, one. Some of the large projects, stormwater costs, we continue to budget about $1 million to keep that plan moving forward on assessing and figuring out what, where the areas are and what we need to do going forward. Document management system is in progress. We always have various building improvements or pieces of buildings, boilers, HVAC, rooftop units, and so forth. And just a reminder, we own the 48th District Court, so this is going to be a big year. I think we've had to replace some other rooftop units and HVAC in the last few years as well. And that's, that cost is 100% ours. It's not split across the operating units since we are the landlord. We've got a big year on road funds. Sometimes there's no plow trucks or big equipment to replace, but in this year, we have two swap loader plow trucks that already came for, before the board for approval. Those are taking longer timeframe to build, similar to some of the big fire vehicles. Some of the bigger items in public safety, with the addition of dispatch and expansion and locker rooms and such, there's a need to renovate and expand, redesign police and dispatch. There's some fencing they want to put up for carports. The detention door locks are still a physical key, from what I understand, so we're trying to get that upgraded. And vehicle replacements are the big ones for police. Fire, there's always station repairs across those. We have four stations with those. You have HVAC and other units you need to replace. There's some grant projects happening. There's 90% grant for those powered stair chairs. We mentioned the tower truck. And then the chief has a plan to buy a used engine as a backup. Senior services fund will spend $1 million of the ARPA on their parking lot. That will begin this spring. They have a couple new programs funded either through county ARPA as well as other grants. And their building now is about 17, 16, 17 years old. So we're going to start seeing some of those 10 years, 2007. Yeah. We're going to start seeing some of the building maintenance things come up. So the first one here is HVAC. On building inspection funds, we're starting to see permit revenues decrease as some of those larger projects with Oakland Hills, the schools, some of the bigger houses move past the permit phase. We do have one vacant position. We're going to continue utilizing a third-party company as backup to make sure those inspections don't get delayed. On the safety path fund, so this is one where we have intentionally been decreasing fund balance. We had multiple years leading up to and through COVID where, either because of COVID or materials availability or contractor timelines or availability, we still collect the full millage and that money gets set aside and restricted for safety path projects, but we weren't able to spend it within the fiscal year. So we've been trying over the last few years to purposely budget a deficit budget. And when I say deficit, only to the extent of that year's revenues and expenditures. So if we had $2 million in revenue, we may have budgeted $3 million in expenses or three and a half to try and eat away at that fund balance. So that's what this, this chart is here. The green is the fund balance. So you can see if our plan comes to fruition by the end of fiscal year '26, we'll be back down to a more reasonable fund balance in that fund. Cable funds, again, 100% of franchise fees. Those are starting to come down and along with peg fees. And I think the board's well aware of the work being done by the director, looking into other sources and fiber and other, other things. So the, our two rooftop units being replaced this year on that building. And a couple hundred thousand dollars looking to do some office and building improvements to the operations there. Then I wanted to remind everyone, this is the last slide, the opioid settlement fund is still out there. We've received about $240,000 so far. In the beginning, we were not as clear of what it could be spent on, whether they would change the rules 15 times like they did with ARPA funding. We didn't know how much we were going to get each year. So some of that is more definable now. So it looks like we'll be getting, unless somebody pays early on the payment plan, we'll get about $50,000 a year until 2032, and then it'll start declining till through 2038. All in at the end, approximately $875,000. And I think there's been discussions behind the scenes of putting a plan in place to start drawing that down. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. And before we get any further, I know our directors are here and deputy directors that help work on these budgets, and thank you for all your work on this and all you're doing for the township. And I know it's, it's, it's long and it's tedious, but you kind of manage your own budgets. And so thank you for being here, and thank you for all your work. And Jason, again, thank you. This is very good work. So any other questions from the trustees?
Any questions to Jason or anything on the budget?
Anything on the budget or for Jason.
Got a couple of questions if nobody else does. I'm looking at the audit report, and what it shows for 2024 was the employer contributions to OPEB were $6,158,489. So why is the number appearing as only 125,000 contributions for OPEB?
So the audit report is on a full accrual basis, and you get credit for, you have to report and get credit for the retiree healthcare expenses for OPEB that we're paying for out of our operational budget. So that does not mean that was new money transferred out from the funds into the trust.
And if it's fully funded, technically, we should not have to pay for any benefit payments?
If, I don't follow the question.
If the OPEB is fully funded, we would not have to be making any benefits payments. Is that a correct statement?
Fully, like, you're talking like in 2045?
Yeah.
I think probably even before we get to 100%, we'll, we'll start having those discussions with the actuary to determine when is, when is the right time to start drawing down. Because as you know, if you start drawing down those assets, then there's less invested, and we wouldn't want to put ourselves in another position of being underfunded or not having enough set aside.
Okay. I'm also looking at the actuarial report for the OPEB, and it shows water and sewers being 100% funded, that sub-account. Are they contributing to OPEB and why?
Water and sewer fund, we haven't decided yet. If it does contribute, it will contribute to what the actuarial report says, which is about $50,000. But the, the, we look at it on a total trust basis, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't start drawing down on pieces and sections of it, especially for those pieces that are smaller populations. I'd still look at the trust overall, which is about, I think it's, it's lower now that some of the investments have dropped, but I think at that level or at that time, it was 29% funded.
On the whole, but water and sewer is fully funded, building inspection is fully funded, and cable studio is fully funded. And if they were not consolidated, they would not have to be making any contributions. According to the actuarial report and according to the valuations for using uniform actuarial assumptions, it actually shows a negative number for water and sewer, building inspection, and cable studio. So why should those funds be paying in when they're, A, fully funded, there's no actuarial requirement, and it almost seems that the payments are going in to benefit the general fund?
Is that a statement or a question?
Well, the first part is a question, why are we paying in from those sub-accounts? If they're fully funded?
Well, you, you keep using plural, and the only one that has still been out of the ones you listed is water and sewer fund, and it's been a very nominal amount. And again, the auditors do like to look at what the ADC is of that fund, and I believe the last, and that, that, that statement is updated every two years, not every year. So...
I just took this off the...
I believe it says about a $50,000 contribution, but I don't have it right.
No, it's, it's a negative contribution, which means nothing should go in.
Like I said, we will be discussing that with the treasurer before we make those But there are no, there have been no additional contributions out of the cable fund or the building inspection fund since, I believe, 2017.
But the Department of Treasury considers the benefit payments as contributions, and our auditors consider those as contributions as well.
That is...
And so does the GASB disclosure.
That is not the...
They show the cash going in on the accounts and the cash going out as benefit.
Completely different. That is not an ADC payment, that is not considered a contribution, it's not new dollars going into the trust. What's being reported on the statement is not apples-to-apples from an actual contribution.
So then why are we making contributions if those three funds are fully funded? I would rather have the money stay in cable studio, the money to stay in building inspection, and the money to stay in water and sewer.
I know we're supposed to be focusing on budget, but I did a very in-depth presentation in August of 2023 to the board that I think, I think might be, I know it would be very helpful. I explained the different statements, the GASB statements versus the actuarial, what the intent and purpose of each is. If you want to, I suggest maybe looking at that and then Treasurer Schostek and I can sit down with you and explain.
I was, I was here for the meeting. I saw the presentation, and I've also went back and looked at it. And again, the question I'm asking is, on the township website, it shows that there should be no payments going in from cable, building inspection, and water and sewer, which means something else has to be made up from the general fund. So that's why I'm asking now for the budget.
Mark, he's answered your question three times. There is no payment going into the OPEB trust from the cable studio or building inspection fund.
It's not going in, but it's considered as a contribution from an accounting standpoint. When the funds were aggregated together for investment, we were advised that it would be still considered from an accounting standpoint as separate. And that's why I'm asking...
And how does that affect the budget?
Because if the funds are not going in for those payments from those three accounts, the general fund would have to make up the difference because of how the corrective action, action plan is structured.
So what is your request? What's your point? You're saying there's money that...
Either you're saying the general fund is being injured or is not injured? What, I don't, what are you trying to say?
Makes no sense.
I'm saying that water and sewer is being injured. I'm saying that building inspection is being injured, and same with cable studio.
How are they being injured?
They're fully funded. There's, since they are fully funded sub-accounts, they shouldn't be making, why, what's the need for making additional payments?
So, I mean, I just believe...
Mark, we said four times, there are no payments going in.
Well, that's what's not on the actuarial.
Other than water and sewer.
He doesn't understand it. Why don't we move on?
Okay. The actuarial statement is an accrual-based statement. That's not a cash statement. There is no cash being moved from the cable studio or building inspection fund held at the township to the OPEB trust. And there hasn't been in the last eight years.
And there's no money coming out either, correct?
Correct. It's being invested in, it's...
And since it's 100% funded, why don't we use the revenue generated, if it's 100% funded, on some of the sub-accounts and, and lower those expenses, especially for water and sewer?
So I think you're, what you're saying is to spend down those accounts to pay the benefits.
No, I'm saying to let the...
To pull out of the trust. You want us to start drawing out of the trust because those are 100% funded?
You want to draw out of the cable studio trust to pay the water and sewer expenses?
No.
Oh, the cable.
No. Cable and studio generates income every, every year, and why isn't that paying for the cable and studio? Why do they have to pay from the annual budget? Because those, these plans are designed, if they are fully funded and the investments are working properly or correctly, it goes up and down, of course, but they are designed to pay and meet the annual benefit payouts.
So I guess the assumption, and you say, stated it right there, and my perspective on this is, the fully funding is a snapshot in time in the past, and that number changes...
And that number changes significantly based upon changes in the actuarial assessments, changes in the return on the dollar. Just because it's fully funded today or that day does not, in a conservative budgeting standpoint, would not authorize, I would not then stop putting money in because, you know, in the years that I've been an employment lawyer, watching these funds, they just, there's, year over year, they can change so much. You can be fully 110% one year and 79% the next year, and because markets can change so dramatically. So it would be irresponsible, I think, to start taking money out of funds or not putting money in in a conservative fashion to make sure that they remain properly funded in down markets.
So at what point?
I think that's what's happening. It's just conservative.
At what point does it become prudent to allow the, those investments to do what they were structured to do? Building Inspection, according to what's on the township website and the most recent report, is funded at 228%. Cable Studio is funded at 176%.
But Jason, if we look back over time, we could challenge, those numbers change, right? They fluctuate.
Correct. And they're going to keep, they're going to keep changing.
Right. So we have to keep a pattern for our practices, and we have to stay on top of them and make adjustments as we see fit. And so you can't always take for what we see today what may happen tomorrow. But I think our practices are very good. But I think, Mark, what you're getting at is a different style of accounting than what we're all practicing here. And if you want to make a motion to say, this is what we could do, we could entertain a motion, but I don't think anybody, I'm not picked, they're not picking up to make the change because of our practice, it's been very, very strong, and we're seeing results from it.
So what we're going to do is continue to generate revenue for Water and Sewer.
Yep.
When on the, to pay for the benefits, even though it's fully funded.
Yes, because that's the, that's what I think we should do. The board could vote and do something different. But I think it's conservative to ensure that we are, that the money will be there to continue to make prudent deposits into that account.
So when does the money get paid out? And as you accrue more dollars in OPEB for Water and Sewer, it restricts the use of those Water and Sewer funds, and it shows up in our fund balances as fund reserves.
Okay.
Yep.
So it doesn't help us, especially when there's no fact basis.
Yes, it does. Because it ensures that in the future, we don't have major gaps between what we owe and what we have in the bank.
We hope.
We hope. I mean, that's, that's the goal, right? That's why we're at where we are now, is because those payments were made.
Right.
Well, but, Mark, something that today Jason and I emailed back and forth a few times, which I appreciate very much, Jason, for some of the questions that I had, just to ask him ahead of time in case there was, you know, he had great answers and information for me. But one of the things that we went back and forth in is like, for example, Cable, right now, is spending, their income is up because Kerry has staffed up and been doing so much more because we slid in COVID. So their spending is higher than their budget, but they have a fund balance. So eventually, so we're going to use some of that fund balance, but eventually, they're going to, things are going to have to change one way or the other. But the fund balance is now able to allow them to staff up while any other revenues may still be adjusting. So we don't just like pull out of fund balances, I think, is what he's asking.
Anybody else? Chris?
Yeah. Maybe Jason can speak to this, because we're creating that new department for human resources. Are we going to be putting the benefits administrator, the HR benefits administrator, into that department as well, or no?
We have, we'll be discussing that. We haven't gotten that far.
And then, I know we have some capital improvements specifically that we talked about for IT and accounting, just to kind of rework those spaces. Is there money allocated specifically for HR, just to build them out as well?
You mean for IT support?
I meant like truly for like the HR desks, the people, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we put money in there specifically.
When it says IT and finance, I think that's.
Yeah, okay.
It could have said HR too.
Okay, because I read it as that, I just didn't know there was enough money for that. Perfect.
And just in some other areas, where we were having to hire contractors, we're seeing our costs go up until we can find that planning, for instance, we're short planners. So we've hired a recruiter, but in the meantime, we've had to contract out for those services because we're so short. And we're also short on inspectors right now, and we just had another one go out from an injury, and it's unfortunate, so we're really, we're really going to be behind in those areas for a little while.
Okay.
Yeah, but they're doing the best they can to fill in the gaps, so it's a challenge.
Again, it's good that we have those contracts in place to help us with our ups and downs and flows.
Jason, is there anything else you'd like to cover on the budget at this point? That's it. Okay. Thank you.
Can I say one thing? So this is a discussion of the draft budget. We're not voting on it now or taking any action. It will come back again in early March for the board's formal adoption at that time.
Okay. And moving on to item number six, consider approval to hold all township board commission meetings at the Cable Building beginning February 24, 2025 until April 11, 2025, to allow for the remodeling and technology updates in Township Hall or Auditorium presented by Martin Brook, our township clerk.
So there's a memo in the file concerning this. This room is being remodeled, and technology upgrades are being installed to better provide our communications to the community. And during that period of time, we would be holding, we need to hold our public meetings in another location. The location that has been investigated is the Cable Building, which should be able to house the necessary people. The organizations here at the township that have public meetings, such as Building Planning Ordinance and the Clerk's Department Office, Board of Trustees, we've gone over there and looked at it with the assistance of the Cable Director and staff, and looks like it'll be fully satisfactory. We're going to communicate this information about the temporary move as broadly as possible, as indicated in the memo, and we meet all legal requirements by asking the board to approve this temporary relocation.
Any questions?
I would make a motion that we approve to move over to the Cable Station based on Martin's proposal.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving along. We took two items off our consent agenda, and the first item we'll go to, call it number seven, is the approval of grant purchase of firefighter turnout gear and boots submitted by John Leroy, our fire chief. John, you want to give us an update on that?
I was just looking for approval to purchase 59 sets of turnout gear and 58 pairs of boots. The state of Michigan, this year, came up with a grant through Leo to give every full-time firefighter in the state of Michigan a second set of turnout gear in order for their own protection against cancers that have been found in the fire service.
So this grant is paying for all 100% of it?
100% is paid for by the state of Michigan, reimbursed.
Fantastic. That's outstanding, and they certainly, firefighters certainly deserve that. It's safety, and I make a motion that we approve, and sorry you had to wait for that.
Is there support?
Support.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
All right. Number eight is our approval of payroll vouchers for February 10, 2025.
Yes, I'm objecting to the Orion Cellular fees of $12,624. They were never discussed or approved by the board.
Sorry, say again, Mark, which fees?
They were never, I don't believe that, that.
The fees, what were the fees you're saying?
The Orion Cellular, page 21, check number, or the voucher number 187613, $12,624.48. I also want to make note that those are a per meter basis, so the people who have one meter are paying for the individuals who have two. So that's number one. Number two, my objections for payroll and vouchers based on the presentation of the finance tool, I will remove. And I had, and I apologize for not getting, asking earlier, but there's a cross-connect program for the Hydro Group. It doesn't say who's paying for that expense. It's 187631, and it's unclear where the funds are coming from.
Say the number again, 18?
187631, the cross-connection program.
Cross-connection program.
I was thinking it was a Water and Sewer, but it doesn't show that it's a Water and Sewer expense.
Okay, I'll get you some answers on that. I'll email you some answers.
One quick thing, Mark, one of them was, he said Orion Cellular?
Yeah, for the meters.
Yes.
He's saying that if you have, if you're getting two meters, the one meters are paying for the two meters.
It's a per, it's a, according to the Badger website.
You're talking about the cellular service itself.
Yes, for collecting the data.
Correct.
So that is a per meter charge.
Right.
And the individuals with one meter are subsidizing the individuals with two meters.
We'll look into that and get back. Is there any other questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Six to one passes, and I believe that leads us to adjournment.
And move adjourned.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.